Good morning.
Good morning.
The meeting of the Southern University Board of Supervisors called to order. Mr. Vice Chair.
Good morning, everyone. We'd like to bring to the podium Minister Derek Shavers of Mount Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church. Brother Shavers, come on up to the front for us, please. And he will do our invocation and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance by our student from Southern University Laboratory School. Good morning, Mr. Shavers, Pastor Shavers, excuse me.
Good morning. Let us all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We give you praise and glory for this opportunity to allow us to come in to this place. God, we ask you to bless this meeting, bless everyone that make up this great school. We ask you, oh God, that when we come together, that we'll be on one accord. Because where there is unity, there is strength. We ask you, oh God, that you'll bless the president, bless everyone that is a part of this great school. Lord, we thank you now for our families, our friends, our homes, but most of all, we thank you for being God. We ask you, as we move forward, when tough decisions need to be made, that we'll be led by your guidance. We love you, God, we trust you, and we give you praise. Let your peace be in this place. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen and thank the Lord.
Amen, amen. Before you leave, Brother Shavers, we're gonna get a picture with you. You can do it. We'll do the pledge first. Our pledge of allegiance this morning will be done by Southern University student Adronicus Matthews. Adronicus is a 12th grade student at the Southern University Laboratory School, who presently holds a cumulative GPA of 4.04. He is the son of Mr. Adronicus Matthews Senior, a very humble and respectful young man who strives to do his best at all times. He has a very gentle spirit and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Upon graduation, Adronicus plans to attend the Southern University in A&amp;M College and major in civil engineering. He has attended Southern University Lab School since the ninth grade and loves it dearly. He is focused on his academics and is a proud member of the Senior Beta Club. His hobbies include playing video games and hanging out with his friends and family. His favorite video game is 2K. When asked what he enjoys most about Southern University Laboratory School, he expressed that he really enjoys how his teachers relate to everything, to the real world, and how they prepare him for the next level.
Boards, members of boards and distinguished guests, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. President.
Is this embarrassing? Roll call, Academic Affairs Committee. Mr. Sam Gilliam, Dr. Leon Tarver, Mr. Myron Lawson, Mrs. Kristy Reeves, Mrs. Ann Smith, Ms. Dr. Orlando Williams, Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Begging my good friend, Mr. Gilliam's pardon. We're gonna do a couple of special presentations prior to turning over to Academic Affairs. But I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to acknowledge what happened just off of our campus this morning and say that our prayers are with all of the victims of this morning's shooting. I noticed a significant amount of media attention was brought to bear on on the shooting and I just wanted to say that there are a lot of great things that happen at this campus and our campus in Shreveport and our campus in New Orleans. And there are wonderful stories of accomplishment and miraculous life-changing events that occur on a positive basis every day. And I just think that if the media paid as much attention to all of the positive things that happen on this campus as they do to the negative things that occur, we may be able to make a positive change so some of those negative things just don't occur. But my prayers are with all of the victims and I hope for a speedy recovery. Well, now we'll turn to Vice Chancellor Derek Warren for a special presentation.
Good morning, distinguished board and members of the Southern University System Family. It is my distinct pleasure, on behalf of Dean Donald Andrews and the College of Business here at the Southern University, to introduce members of the Alliant team. As many of you know, innovation, academic excellence, and the creation of programs that will continue to advance the Southern University system are hallmarks of our university. And that's why it is such a distinguished honor today to introduce Mr. Mike Tucker and Ms. Lillian Van Belk of the Alliant Corporation to discuss and to share an amazing, amazing announcement about new academic programming that will help continue to advance our mission of excellence here at Southern University. Mr. Tucker and Ms. Velt, please join me at the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. I do appreciate it. Our board supervisors, very good to be here. Again, Mike Tucker here, local, two-time graduate of Southern University and gives me high, high honor to be here to give back just a portion of what I've gained from this institution. The direction of Dr. Leon Tarver, he was back as a professor and Lester Poochow, who gave me my first employment opportunity, is just, it warms me to be able to give something back and this is what it's all about. We have Lillian Van Belk, Executive Vice President of Alliant Benefit Services. We have Shard Richard, Ed McNorton and our partner, I'm sorry, John from Alliant as well, and Patrick Bell from Department of Education. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Lillian Van Belk and make a presentation to you guys, but again, it is very humbling to be here and be able to present something to this great institution of higher education.
Good morning, everyone. You have these moments in your life and you start to think about, as I get toward the end of my career, it's like, what's my legacy? What am I gonna leave behind and what will make me proud? And I am so honored to be able to come to you today and say that I hope my legacy is that we helped to build a school of insurance at Southern University, the first is the kind and historically black college. I hope to say that I was part of an amazing group of people partnering with a wonderful university to bring something to our students and to our population. Insurance is an interesting thing. It's one of those quiet, hidden programs and occupations that people talk about and, you know, everyone has an insurance agent. But you think about it, all of you work or are involved with insurance and it's incredibly profitable when you're working in the industry and in the field. It's also one that looks a lot different than I do. A lot different than I do. And how do you offer something and how do you create generational wealth? Because that's what we're missing. We're missing generational wealth. We're missing that when someone has an insurance program and they have clients, they pass those clients on to their children, to their organizations, their children's event, starting off with a platform of business and programs at a very early age and they build and they build and they build generational wealth. I want to be able to give that. I want to be a part of something that's giving that to African-American students. I want to be a part of an organization that sees the potential and opens up their doors. So last year, Alliant created a charitable foundation and our first program off the gate said, okay, we want to do something, want to find an organization we can partner with and grow with. We want to be able to do something that's different. We don't just want to give scholarships and we don't just want to do mentoring programs. We're doing both of those as well. We wanted something beyond that. So the degree program that we're starting this year is actually gonna be a three-year program. While we help the university, we are bringing forth Spencer Educational Foundation and they're going to help to build out the curriculum. You have got a fabulous curriculum already and you have a concentration program that was part of the Department of Insurance in Louisiana. So you already started. We're bringing in resources and we're bringing in tools and money to help you get it off the ground because at the end of the day, money is what's gonna matter. The commitment we're making today is $1.3 million, 1.33. And I said, thank you for clapping, but that should, as my my superiors and my organization say, that's just the beginning. That's just the beginning. With that $1.3 million, we hope to first help the university get their accreditation for a school of insurance and risk management, actually risk management insurance. Then from there, we want to be able to expand that out, be able to provide scholarships for the students coming in. Right now, we're gonna be 12 scholarships for the first year. We're gonna help with the accreditation process with the Board of Regents. We're gonna help with curriculum development. We're gonna bring in specialists to help you build out the curriculum, which you already have. We're also gonna help with outreach, the various insurance agencies, also outreach within the university to help you attract students in. It's a complete program and our goal is to be a part of the process the entire way. By year two, 2024, we hope to be able to start admitting students into the program and then we hope to have it become an actual school of insurance within five years. At that point, millions should be rolling into the organization, from our organization into yours. It is our first endeavor as a foundation and we're so incredibly honored to be partnered with you, the Southern University. Thank you so very much.
She wants to say just a couple of words.
Hey, John, how you doing, brother? Hey, good to see you again. How are you? I remember. Okay, so good to see you. Okay. Well, I work very closely with Dean Andrews and the rest of the team. Good.
Mr. Chairman, board members, if you don't mind, I'm Patrick Bell. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Diversity and Opportunity with the Louisiana Department of Insurance.
We always have time to listen to the Department of Insurance.
All right, good, good, good. But I just wanted to share with everybody that 11 years ago, when we started the Risk Management and Insurance Program in the College of Business with the team over there, it was my vision to, one day, develop that program not only from a concentration but up to a baccalaureate degree. And over the time, we've been looking for a good partner that would step up and provide that opportunity for us to expand the program and also to provide opportunities for the students that go through the program. And I'm so thankful for Alliant Insurance Services for stepping up in a mighty big way, the way they have to help advance the Risk Management and Insurance Program at Southern University. So thank you for your continued support and you'll be hearing a lot more great things from this insurance program.
And he's a former board member and thank you for your service at Southern University, sir. Now we will turn to a special presentation from the School of Education.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board, my president, ladies and gentlemen, the Director of the School of Education contracted COVID, so she's not present, but I'm making the presentation on behalf of the Academic Affairs Division and I'm supported by, I'm using the data that was provided by the college dean and also the Director of School of Education and the interim chair. The discussion is about School of Education, the current state and future directions. I will try to make my presentation short so that there'll be time for discussion and to be able to answer your questions. I cannot, we cannot imagine our university without a school of education, without education being one of the prominent programs at this institution, same with music. But I want to provide you the data in terms of enrollment, retention and graduation. So I provided you that last three, the trend. There is a challenge in terms of enrolling students in education and some of it is local, some of it is national. But we have a grave need to place teachers who are prepared to lead in the secondary schools. So 2018, we got 26 students enrolled, of which 16 persisted the second year in special education, grades one to five. Similarly, you see that 13 and 15 were the enrollment the subsequent years and the retention, the nine out of 13, 10 out of, you know, 15 the subsequent years. So the same, this is the enrollment data and retention data and I also have provided enrollment data for the master's program. That's the size and that's the retention data for the School of Education and the programs in the School of Education. This is the degree production in the School of Education. You have that last three years. The only thing I want to update, which I did not have till this morning, was that we have also another master's program in which the degree production was six, four and five in those three years. So based on the data, we still feel that our goal is to achieve student and program success by fulfilling our mission. We will do this by making sure that our students pass the praxis exam, which is a gateway to get licensed, graduate on time and be able to be in the classroom in front of the students. New legislature in teacher education, you know, is helping us. In the next slide, I'll let you know that our goal is to have 100 high school students in pre-educator pathways. Last board meeting, the president announced and let you know about our success in having all these trio programs. I'm also on direction of, my president, work with enrollment management to have this pipeline pathway for more robust enrollment in select programs in STEM or STEAM, science, technology, engineering, agriculture and allied sciences and also mathematics and education. To increase research output, three to five publications, you know, presentations annually in the school. We are aided by the recent changes in legislation, legislature, which allows us to advance our students beyond the second year without the praxis one. So praxis two is still a requirement, praxis one is something that tests the students' ability to do high school work. So that was the stumbling block for a lot of our students. I spoke with the dean of LSU and they, if you have 21 or 22 ACT, you don't have to take praxis. But now that praxis is not a requirement, we think we will benefit most out of it. And the School of Education there has seen a 14% increase after the praxis has the emphasis on praxis has been reduced. So I will be able to report in January how our subsequent semesters as to how it has impacted us. Now they have also lowered the GPA from 2.5 to 2.2. They will provide temporary employment permit if you are within 10% of passing scores and 120 hours minimum, except in cases of dual degrees. So these are the changes that have taken place in the regulatory framework. So with all these things, we think we will be able to add some new programs, supplement and strengthen the existing programs. And we are aided by, the president's office has also approved a Title III grant that'll aid the enrollment and also the preparation of our students to be successful in terms of graduating and in terms of being placed in, get licensed. The second row is the award from internally in terms of the Title III and then that is a three-year grant or five-year grant that is being provided to the School of Education. And you can see the School of Education is applying also for the other grants. And here are some of the specific scholarships that are available to the students from Board of Regents, but I will request that we provide also scholarships, targeted scholarship to students that we get from from the schools through our effort so that the enrollment will be higher, degree production will be better. The accrediting agency requires that this, the structure of the School of Education, its placement, its autonomy should be consistent with the scale of its operation and as necessary. There is a commitment from the university to provide autonomy to the School of Education and over time, as it reaches some benchmarks in terms of enrollment and degree production for it to become a college. The way we do it is that departments become schools and schools become colleges based upon these benchmarks and that commitment has been made. And the goal of the School of Education that is provided to me in this and to you through this presentation is to have 150 enrolled education majors. And when that happens, the autonomy and the pathway to college will happen. I'll stop here and I'll take questions.
Mr. Bondell.
I don't see high school.
I think there is. I think I'll have to, I'll have to find out and get back to you unless there is the dean and Dr. Osagi Jackson, if you can answer that question.
Good morning. I'm Emily Jackson O'Shea. I'm the interim chair of the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. And in regards to the secondary education, we do have biology, chemistry, English, history, music, K through 12, and math and physics. Those are our secondary education, seven through 12 areas.
Any other questions? Dr. Tarver.
Sort of marketing plan do you have for recruiting students into these programs we have?
Well, currently, we have the pre-educator pathway where we're actually working with high schools where students are actually going to be able to get dual enrollment. Where high school students will be able to get dual enrollment credit where they can take introductory courses that will get them to bridge into our program.
Do you have sufficient recruitment faculty or workers to help you do this across the state?
At this moment, no, but right now- At this moment, no, but right now our department consists of Dr. Peoples, myself and Dr. Stewart. We're in the process of working towards hiring new faculty. Definitely, we do need assistance with recruitment. But in the meantime, we have been going out into the field and talking with high school teachers and working with high school students to try to recruit into our program.
Do you have the critical mass of faculty necessary to maintain your accreditation standing?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Aaron Scott Stewart. I'm an assistant professor of reading and English language arts methods and also the new accreditation coordinator in the School of Education. What we are trying to do to achieve what we need for accreditation is we're hiring two new faculty in math and science education and also in social studies education. So that will give us four full-time faculty that are, that are not also in administration. And then we've been in works with the Title III office to make sure that we have funding to get a consultant or two here to help us push through the CATE process. We do have an extension of twelve months so that our reports are due in spring twenty four and that our site visit will be spring twenty five. So at that point, we should have what we need to push everything through and be accredited, maintain accreditation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tarver. Ms. Gillum and Ms. Smith.
I'm not sure that the question I'm going to ask falls within purview of the School of Education. But month before last, I believe, we did the academic reports that were, we were reporting or sending to the Board of Regents. I noticed in that report specifically in the School of Music, which I don't think falls within the purview of the Education Department, but I've been getting feedback, we look of the graduates for music education, which used to be a stalwart of the music department and the university as a whole. We had absolutely zero graduates in that program. We just asked a question, I guess, and a statement, could some kind of attention be focused, Dr. Sahu, to bring that department back up to the level? And, and don't get me wrong, we totally appreciate the, the regard that the band and the dancing dolls are getting, but I mean, what's going on in terms of educating our young people to go out there and, and further into music education?
I think we, there was, we, we alluded to, you know, having a pathway. The Board of Regents is going towards that way in terms of early college. And I think that's the best thing to do. And our president also has provided, has had put emphasis on having recruiters in particular geographic regions of the state. And with the School of Education, that would be, I would recommend for my president's review and approval and your review and approval, a dedicated recruiter for the School of Education that will be placed, that will be joined, lead responsible to enrollment management and also to the School of Education. Similar effort can be also made where the person is part of the enrollment management team in terms of recruiting, but is paying special attention to music. And that's something that, looking at the numbers, I think there is a need. In my opening, I said it's hard to imagine an HBCU without education and music.
Thank you.
And so, you know, the, that is certainly something that will be, will want to emphasize, so.
Well, if you would further on this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, just furthering the synergy over there, I'd made a walk through, I think the music department, must have been last year. And just going, looking at some of the bulletin board statements and they had announcements there from two thousand sixteen and I'm saying, what's going on? You know, it used to be just a total synergy going on. I'll leave it at that.
Lot of investment is being made in the music area because of digital music, digital music production. I think you will see a difference in the short run.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I would like to ask the question, it may not be as, as important as I think it is. But I noticed in my readings, I saw Southern University of New Orleans with the College of Education. And here we use in School of Education, is there a difference? Maybe I should ask Dr. Tarver that. He's, he has been here a while.
What, what is the question? What's the segment?
The question, okay, somebody else can answer.
No, I was trying to hear what you were saying.
Okay. I asked the question about the consistency of, I noticed in my reading that Southern University of New Orleans uses the College of Education. And here we're using the School of Education, is there a difference? Does it matter? Consistency may or may not be important to us.
Very good question, as they say. We once had a College of Education. And we are where we are now, there are reasons for that. And it all centers around productivity and, and success of our programs. But it also depends upon the amount of investment that the enterprise is going to make in that particular area. At one point in time, that was really the face of Southern University because in those early days, I mean, we were educating teachers, people to become teachers. And we've fallen from grace in that over this last twenty, thirty years, I imagine, for many reasons. And they're attempting to address those, but it was clear just from the responses I got a second ago that we are under, understaffed in terms of faculty and in terms of support personnel in order to help them get where they should go. And if we're serious about trying to address the needs for providing educators for the future, we're going to have to commit more resources and make it happen. Three people can't do it.
So our, our end product or our goal for Southern University of Baton Rouge, and which is our flagship campus for the system. Will that be something that we will eventually change or will it remain School of Education?
Well, certainly the better person to address that would be Dr. Shields, who has been paying some attention to all of this and is apparently willing to make that investment.
Doctors, Sahu pointed out, we're making some investments now. Before, we can turn it into a college, there needs to be higher enrollment. We're making investment in adding some faculty, the faculty has to grow. Scholarly production has to increase. So we're on a path that might get us there to a college. But that's essentially what needs to happen. So we're making some investments. Or also remind this board that almost every area of this university needs resources to recruit students. So if you talk about education, fine. If you talk about engineering, if you, you know, almost all of these areas, we, I've made investment to hire two additional enrollment recruitment people in addition to some vacancies we're filling now. I carved that out of money that we took from the pool and Mr. Pugh not very happy with me, but we're making an investment of a half a million dollars in upping our recruitment efforts across the campus. Additionally, for whatever reason, we've been reluctant for really talented students to offer them full tuition scholarships, fearing that we don't have the money. I suggested to our enrollment people that if you have students that have twenty five or above ACT scores, we offer them full tuition and we'll figure out a way to cover that. I'm a little worried about the, the, the different standards, you know, as a port of entry, I think that's, that's fine. But that shouldn't be the typical student. We have to recruit talented students into the teaching profession. If we recruit more talented people, all of the students will succeed at a higher level. So we do have a, a notion of how we're going to do this, both in recruiting additional talented students, investing in recruiters. But at, at some point, we're going to have to come to this board and say, what is your priority? Because we, resources are limited. So.
One other statement, I noticed during the week of the Southern University LSU game that you had a forum on education and improving education. And the announcement was made, I happen to have attended, it was excellent. And the announcement was made that you actually led the, the forum as far as the organization of it, and it was excellent. However, you all did suggest a few possible opportunities and areas where we could start the recruiting process as low as the elementary grades. So has that been offered here at our school because you did lead the, the forum?
I, I would defer to my, my colleagues in the School of Education as to how much progress they've made on working on that aspect of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Lawson, did you have anything else?
A plethora of problems within our system. And we can't ignore the fact that our salaries are no longer as competitive as they should be with our professors and the, and I want to call it a College of Education because I think it should be. And I'd like to know what it takes to get there and I don't see that couldn't be called one now, but we got to address the money issue at the level of recruiting the type professors and maintaining the quality professors that we have firstly. But secondly, and maybe as a first priority, we got to really address, and I heard you mentioning, we have a, a solution brought to this board fairly soon. We're not doing a very good job with paying our recruiters at the base level to get the students in here. But what we, once we get the students in here, then we got to give them quality instructions, right? In the college education, so I think we need to get back to our base and take a serious deep dive into how we are recruiting and if we're recruiting students at the level of, that we should be. And I just think we're not, is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Dr. Tarver.
I wanted to refer back to Ms. Smith's statement and Dr. Shields's response and get some answer from the team in terms of how they are addressing the issue she rose, raised.
I think this is something that warrants additional discussion at a committee level. But.
But I think he believes that they can tell us something about what progress they're making. I think that's what we're trying to get to, Mr. Chairman. Pardon? Yeah, that we just, that, they didn't get a chance to respond because you.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Um, so what we've been working on is, is solidifying and increasing our pre educator pathway so that we have direct contact with more high school students. So to that end, we've developed partnerships with, well, of course, with Southern University Lab School and also with Bel Air High School, and we've been writing some grants. So we've written about, including the Title III funding that we, was committed to us through the university. We've written over five million dollars in grants to the U.S. Department of Education. We're submitting one to the Board of Regents in order to make sure that we can fund the pre educator pathway, that we can have some in-house student services. Because since our students have to do their one hundred twenty hours of classes, do one hundred eighty clock hours of field experiences by the end of year three, and they spend about five hundred hours in residency in their final year. They just have a, a larger academic and professional burden than the average undergraduate student. So we're thinking with a student services center funded through that Border Regions Grant that we can really support them and get some supplemental instruction and guided pathways going. Those are the things that really seem to have been effective at Morgan State and LSU. And we want to sort of build those things here. So we've been trying to fund that through the grants that we have to just build things up and get some more coordinators to sort of run the programs. Because we have to teach the classes, do the research and run the programs. It gets, you know, a little difficult. So we're just trying to, you know, be proactive about that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I mean, what would be the optimum level of people that is needed to, to, to do what you're wanting to do? And, and has that been communicated? Do you have a package for it or something to that effect?
We, um, just in the, in the strategic plan that we have and the grants that we've been writing, we've been sort of fleshing out our needs. So with four full-time tenure track faculty, we're looking at a professional experiences coordinator to handle the field experiences in a residence. We're looking at someone to, because we have a praxis lab. We were funded to do a lab where students could do simulated field experiences, but we need to have the people to run those things. And we do have some salaries in place and some grant funds to sort of augment those salaries because where they were, we couldn't get anybody, they were too low. So I think if we have maybe a handful of coordinators to run the programs and then, you know, the professors. And then I think for accreditation, we just need a little extra support to redesign some things. Because we do want to realign our courses, field work and residency. So all of those things are highly effective in pushing our students through and so that they're ready to teach on day one.
I, I would make a suggestion at, at some point in time, not next meeting, but y'all come back like Chairman Shawdy said, in the form of a committee, to be able to kind of break it down and let us know and just keep us informed before us what's going on through the administration. So we can get y'all what y'all need. I know education is important and we have a shortage of teachers out there. So what you're working to do is to kind of fill that gap and we want to do what we can to support that also. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bartholomew.
Thank you. With the trend that is being, going, going on in the State Department of Education, standards are being changed. Quality of instruction has to be improved, which will bond out to the success of the school districts and the parish throughout the state of Louisiana itself. So I hope that when you plan to look into that as well as being a foundation of mechanism to assist in making sure that these objectives will come out in the education program.
Thank you all for the presentation. I look forward to hearing more at a later date.
Thank you.
Now, we've got some folks who have been very patiently waiting in the back and I appreciate that. If Mr. Pitts and Dr. Brown could join us for the Above and Beyond presentation. And before they get started, I need to recognize Ms. Jean Ware, a former board member. Ms. Ware, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. President, Honorable Board Members, good morning. What a joy it is for me to be able to introduce the Above and Beyond Award. I represent Facility Services, but I didn't make the nomination. Another department recommended one of my guys for the award. And Mr. Vice Chair plays into the narrative that you spoke to us about last week where we touch everybody on this campus and we are the heartbeat. Thank you for that. I want to introduce our lead plumber, Mr. Reginald Steve LeBrie, who is here thinking that he's investigating the leak on the third floor. But who is Mr. LeBrie? When we shut the campus down at four o'clock in the morning to fix a leak, that's Mr. LeBrie. When a contractor hits a line and we have to dig down and, and, and we're working all night, we bring in lights and we bring in food to get it done, that's Mr. LeBrie. When generational leaders such as Dean Brown and, and Board Member Christie Reeves calls and said, we're going to buy a Jag mobile and we want you to house it in your area. We'll build a garage for it and everything. We need a steward to take care of it, who will be the only person that has the keys. Because we intend to transform a community. That's Mr. LeBrie. I'm going to be short because again, it's not my nomination, but let me just say that he's a good guy. He's just a great man. And you know, students recognize that. And I'll share this with you. One of the nursing students said, Mr. LeBrie, are you going to come to my graduation? Will you come? And she not knowing that he, he's at every event, making sure the toilets flush and the sinks work. He just looked and said, I wouldn't miss it. Of course I am. So, Mr. LeBrie, congratulations on the award and Dean, I'll yield my time and turn it over to you. But borrowing from Vice Chairman Whitfield, you have Vice Chairman Whitfield, you have touched everyone and you are the heartbeat.
Good morning Chairman Shorty, Vice Chair Whitfield, President Shields and honorable members of the board. It is an honor to nominate, we call him Mr. Steve, for the above and beyond award. Uh, as you heard, Mr. Steve serves as our plumber and pipe fitter. Um, but he also serves as the driver of the Jag mobile. He reports directly to Mr. Pitts. But Mr. Pitts has shared him with us. Um, he lives in Opelousas, so he drives from Opelousas every day. He gets to campus, gets the Jag mobile and drives it to where it needs to be in the community. Always arriving on time with that Jag mobile looking shiny and armor awls on the tires. He maintains the Jag mobile when it is not in use, making sure that everything is working properly. He arrives early on site. He sets up tables and chairs. He helps the elderly get on and off the bus. And he encourages these nursing students as though they are his very own children. On one particular day when the Jag mobile was out in the community, I don't know if you remember this, Mr. Steve, but I overheard him talking on the phone. Giving somebody directions. Little did I know that he was talking to a pizza delivery service. Ordering food and paying for it out of his pocket to feed our nursing students, our faculty and Ashner staff who were out in the community because a lot of times we're in remote places where we can't get access to food. That act of kindness touched our students and our community in a big way. He not only fed our students that day, but he nourished their souls. And demonstrated to them the true meaning of humanity. Hopefully our students will someday emulate Mr. Steve and his Jaguar spirit. So here today to honor Mr. Steve are our nursing students that are in the back, our faculty and our Ashner partners, including Board Member Christie Reeves. Mr. Steve, we thank you for going above and beyond in serving our students, our community and our beloved Southern University. The School of Nursing could not do what it does without you. So please accept this small token of appreciation from the School of Nursing on behalf.
I'd like to thank everyone that uh, selected me. I'd like to thank the nursing students. And I wish y'all well next month. I will be at the graduation. Uh, I'd also like to thank Dr. Brown and Dr. Wade. It's an honor for me to do this. Once a Jag, always a Jag. Uh, I came to Southern for a year, you know, years ago. And ended up back here thirty-five years later, working. And I enjoy it, no matter what. Uh, it is for the students. That's what I do it for. I got something in here saying I was gonna uh, check the temperature. And Mr. Wade gives me this uh, temperature gun. I'm like, hey, let's do it. We want to keep everybody cool. We want to keep everybody fresh. So thank y'all. I appreciate it.
We're now gonna turn to our Vice Chairman for a second above and beyond award presentation.
Chairman Shorty, my esteemed board members, faculty, staff, students, and the entire Jaguar nation. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you today. Yes. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you today. Of all the amazing blessings in my very short fifty-three years on this earth. Serving my alma mater, The Southern University and A and M College ranks only behind marrying my queen, the birth of my children. And graduating from Southern University and from medical school. I'm sure my colleagues that sit before you today feel the same way about ser- serving Southern University. None of us need the pat on our backs for what we do. We are all accomplished and successful and would otherwise, otherwise not be here. Each of you has done something great in the past, is currently doing something and will continue to do great things. John Bartholomew, educator and chairman of the Plaquemine Parish City Council. Orlando Williams, the first female elected to serve as chairman of the Terebonne Parish Council. Raymond Fondale, entrepreneur and owner of his own insurance agency in Lake Charles. The good Dr. Reverend Sam Tobert, president of the National Baptist Convention of America, the second largest African-American Christian body in the United States. Attorney and Chairman Ed Shorty, who on his first outing was elected constable of the second city court in Orleans Parish in twenty thirteen. Dr. Leroy Davis, a retired professor and dean of Southern University and a former mayor and city council member Baker. Mr. Richard Hilliard, senior engineering business consultant at Wellbuilt Incorporated. Mr. Sam Gillum, who I confirmed was over forty years of service at The Southern University. At one moment Director of Student Affairs at Wiley College. Later appointed assistant, appointed Assistant Chief Administrative Officer with the City of Shreveport. Mrs. Christie Reeves, Vice President for Regional Community Affairs and Government Relations for Ashner's Health System. Also my dance buddy at Bigfoot. Attorney Jody Amadi, a former state senator, now owner of his own law firm. Ms. Nadia Foster, a third-year law student, our student member at the Southern University A and M College. And the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Student Bar Association President. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge, Vice President and General Counsel at CSRSS and Chairman Emeritus of the Southern University System Board Supervisors. Dr. Leon Tarver, President Emeritus of the Southern University System. Chairman Emeritus of the Southern University Board Supervisors and Retired Executive Administrator of the Center of Cultural Heritage and International Programs at The Southern University and A and M College. Dr. Tarver previously serves again as Board Chair twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And Myron K. Lawson, a very successful State Farm Insurance Agent. The list of accomplishments for each of us is way too long to read. I can promise you one thing, however, we do, we do what we do because we truly love The Southern University. But to take, but today, one of our board members stands a little bit taller than the rest. Ever since the day we've met, she has gone above and beyond to serve Southern University. That person is our colleague, my big sister, Chairwoman Emeritus Anne Smith. The bond Ann and I share, yes, you Anne, it's you. The bond Ann and I share, guys. The bond Ann and I share, guys, is a little deeper than some of you may know. On a serious note, I was her grandson Stephen's physician years ago. A very amazing spirit. He unfortunately lost his heartfall battle to colon cancer at a very, very young age. And I still have no idea how you managed to deal with the loss of someone that you love so dearly. But in Anne Smith's way, she never missed a beat and continued to serve the system and her community. Mrs. Smith, AKA Coach Smith, who was captain of her high school basketball team is a fierce competitor. A retired educator, she enjoyed a distinguished career in tangible, tangible Paris as a CWA officer, principal, teacher. And again, basketball coach. As coach, Anne actually led her girls' state basketball, her basketball team to the state championship. And was honored by her peers, earning Coach of the Years ten out of the thirteen years that she coached. Give it up for Anne Smith for now, y'all. She served two terms as chairperson of the system. With vigorous support from her colleagues, I included. She was the first and only female to be unanimously voted Chair Emeritus in twenty eighteen. Coach Smith championed a cultural shift across the Jaguar Nation. Her tenure called on administrators, faculty and staff to advance a student-first philosophy. But more importantly, as well, she introduced us to the above and beyond award. Anne Smith, guys, is the founder of the above and beyond award and is rea- that's rea- that reason that we honor folks like Mr. Steve today, Anne. The above and by, beyond award is a simple way of honoring our faculty, staff administrations, administrators and support staff. Basically, anyone who goes above and beyond to ensure the success of our students and our system. And we thank you so much for implementing an idea that will forever honor those members of the system who go above and beyond. As a token of our appreciation today, you're being honored as an above and beyond recipient. So please come forward to receive your plaque, Coach Smith. The plaque reads, above and beyond award honoring Mrs. Anne Smith, Chair Emeritus, Southern University System, Board of Supervisors, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Founder of the above and beyond award for ongoing, for going the extra mile to help us all achieve our goals. Thank you for your dedication, commitment and professionalism, Southern University Board of Supervisors, Dr. Ronnie Whitfield, Chairman Evan Shorty. And we have an additional gift for you. First of all, this would not be possible was, was it not for the hard work of our board officers. Dr. Renee and of course, Dr. Tracy Taylor-Jarrell, who went way above and beyond to get this done. We will present you with a perpetual plaque. This Ann will hang on the wall in the back right corner forever and forever. And we hope that all future chairmans will continue this tradition. And honoring those that we represent and that represent our campus so well. Again, this is a gift from the Chair, the Vice Chair and the Board Supervisor to you, Anne. We love you. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for what you've done. And we will continue to go above and beyond. Yes, sir.
Okay, here we go. Nice smile, everyone. Look at me. One, two, three, again. Everyone look here. Sometimes I look at these photos, people are getting everywhere. But right here, don't blink, smile, three again, one, two, three. Want to blink, blink now and hold it. All right, hold, one second.
All right, Mr. Gillum, I have held you hostage for quite some time. Thank you for your indulgence, sir. We will now turn our attention to the Academic Affairs Committee. Mr. Gillum, his mic's not on. All right.
We're good?
Okay, we, we forgot Ms. Anne's flowers.
We got the, the blue and orange flowers that honor Kentwood and we have the blue and golden honor of Southern University.
I will tell you that there's a bit ongoing, uh, Brother Gillum, that if Southern Lab loses to Kentwood. I have to wear orange and blue to the next board meeting. That's not gonna happen, Coach Smith.
Now, now we can't see you, so. I'm not gonna be able to recognize Fondale when he has his hand up and that's gonna cause confusion. That's not too much you deserve.
I got you.
Mr. Gillum.
Thank you very much, Miss Chairman. And again, congratulations to our esteemed Emeritus Chair Lady. Indeed, congratulations to you. I said to somebody, I think you actually got it this time, Doc. We have already been called to order, I believe, uh, of the, as the Academic Appeals Committee. We um, are down, I believe, to the adoption of the agenda. And uh, what is the pleasure there, gentlemen, ladies? Been moved by Dr. Tarver and second by Ms. Reeves, that the agenda would be adopted as before us. Uh, item number five, are there any public comments regarding any item before the Academic Appeals Committee? Seeing no one opposed the podium, we move on down, if you will. I believe we're at. Seeing no one approach the podium, we move on down, if you will, I believe we're at action item, item number seven. And we only have two today and they both are coming to us from SUNO. And if you would, with of course, academics being the centerpiece of everything we do here at the university, if you wouldn't mind before Chair entertains a motion for approval, I would simply pitch to Dr. Ammons to give us an articulation of what these two items are about. Dr. Ammons?
Thank you, Mr. Gillum, to members of the Academic Affairs Committee, to our Chair, to our Vice Chair, other members of the Board and President Shields. We have two academic programs on the agenda this morning that we're asking your approval. Both of them grew out of our three-year academic plan. You may recall, we had a conversation about both of the addictive behavior programs that are currently in the College of Arts and Sciences to increase the productivity of the associate degree and the bachelor's degree. Our recommendation is to, well, our proposal is to move those programs from the College of Arts and Sciences to the Millium Charles School of Social Work to better align them from an academic standpoint. The second proposal, well, Mr. Gillum, do you want to take them together?
Would you go on if you would to action item B and we'll do these both in global, if that's all right?
Okay, action item B is a request to implement a Bachelor of Science in Cybersecurity at Southern University at New Orleans. With the assistance of one of the nation's top experts in cybersecurity, we have developed a curriculum that aligns with our three-year plan. It also aligns with the Louisiana Cybersecurity Talent Initiative Fund. But I think more importantly, it aligns with the National Security Agency's Centers of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense. And so it is my proposal, my request that the Board approve the Bachelor of Science in Cybersecurity and the move of the Associate and Bachelor degrees in addictive behaviors to the School of Social Work.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ammons. Are there any questions or points of clarification we need from Dr. Ammons' committee members? Do not, Chair will entertain a motion. It has been moved by Dr. Williams and second by Mr. Smith that these two action items would be approved. Those in favor, please let it be known by sign of our opposing's name. These two items are thus approved. Thank you very much, Dr. Ammons. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
By the way, Dr. Ammons has to get back to a very important meeting. He's got, I think, a lunch and somebody's got the large award waiting for him, Mr. Chairman. You got something?
I didn't hear you. What'd you say, Mr. Gillum?
Dr. Ammons, he has to get back to another point back in the ward.
Yes, we're gonna try and put his report a little bit earlier so that we can get him out of here for that for that big meeting.
Thank you. I remember eight is adjournment. What is your pleasure? It has been moved by Dr. Tara and second by Mr. Smith that we would consider the Academic Affairs Committee adjourned. Those in favor, please let it be known by sign of our opposing's name. The Academic Affairs Committee is thus adjourned. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gillum, we're gonna stay with you for Facilities and Property.
All right. The Facilities and Properties Committee is thus accorded to order. Mr. President, will you please give us a roll call?
Absolutely. Mr. Sam Gilliam.
Here.
Dr. Rainey Whitfield.
Here.
Mr. John Bartholomew. Mr. Richard Hilliard. Mr. Myron Lawson. Dr. Leon Tarver II. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We move now to the adoption of the Agenda for the Facilities and Properties Committee. What is the pleasure? It has been moved by Dr. That's. Who was that? Who moved it?
Mr. Hilliard.
Mr. Hilliard, thank you. Dr. Ed and second by, I don't know, I didn't get it. Thank you. Moved in second by Dr. Whitfield that indeed our agenda would be adopted as printed before you. Number four, public comments. Are there any public comments regarding any item before the Facilities and Property Committee? Seeing no one approach the podium, we have one action item. And if you would, before Chair would open it up for the for the vote on this, but first of all, let me go back to the public comment section. Just to point out a little private privilege, if you will. Would like to offer here, if you would, a commendation to, again, and you're hearing her name a lot here today. That's our illustrious board member, Ms. Kristi Reeves and Ashna. They have done something and I'm saying this in context because it deals with facilities and the fact that you were gonna talk a little bit when we listen to Associate Counsel Sam here of our submissions for capital projects in just a moment. But indeed, through the leadership of our board member, Ms. Kristi Reeves, they are, Ashna is developing and establishing, building a large medical facility in what has before now been known as kind of a healthcare desert, if you will, at the corner of Juella and Juella and Greenwood Road in the middle of an impressed, I mean, an impacted area. If you are familiar with Shreveport, this is right down the street from the fairground and close to the airport. But through her organization, through her leadership, they are putting this facility there. Now here's the catcher. They have chosen a minority general contractor to bring this project to fruition. And it happens to be the same general contractor that has been very instrumental in bringing the Law Center to fruition under the leadership of Chancellor Pierre and Counselor Alfred back here. And I understand, I get an amen from him saying they've done a fantastic job there. Thank you, Ms. Reeves, for leading the initiative and thank you for having the vision to to look at and consider seriously this minority contractor. He's a very good one, by the way. Thank you so very much. The action item, and before we go there, if you would, Mr. Ken Dawson, again, we got people dispersed all over the place today, Mr. Chairman. I think he's downtown dealing with DOTD.
Yes, sir.
DOTD dealing with a major project, so he has asked, if you would, if we would defer to Associate Counsel Sam to give us a an articulation as to what this action item is about. Counselor?
Yes, sir. Good morning. The CEA that is on the action item today regards the Information Center. So this CEA, the informational center is being financially managed by with the construction by DOTD. So this would allow SU self-generated funds to pay for change orders and that the university has agreed to. That's the essence of the CEA. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Any comments or points of clarification? Committee, what is your pleasure? It has been moved by Doctor and second by Dr. Whitfield. We give the motion for the doctor that indeed, item, action item five A, the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between us and the Department of DOTD is thus adopted. Those in favor, please let it be known by sign of I, opposing's nay. This action item is thus adopted. Number six, deals with informational items. There was all of these informational items, I believe, are in your packet. Mr. Dawson is not here, as we've just said. Is there anyone from the staff who wants to come forth and say anything? Otherwise, may I refer Mr. Chairman, Mr. President?
Mr. Dawson will be at the next meeting. We'll give more complete information about these informational items. He's he's harder work doing good things for us this morning.
Yes, indeed. And as I understand, Mr. President, you can affirm a voice. Everything appears to be quite on task to get everything into E-courts and get all of our capital projects requested by the November 1st deadline.
I'm hesitant, but only because Mr. Dawson's not here to compliment him on his extraordinary work. But we are on time and on schedule and in front of everything and it it is a tribute to his fine organizational skills and shepherdiness through this, so we're on track.
Well, we thank him very much and we thank you for your support of his endeavor in this regard. Number seven, was there any other business coming before the Facilities and Property Committee? Hearing none, we move to item number eight, adjourned. What is your pleasure? Removed by Dr. Whitfield and second by Mr. Hilliard that we would consider ourselves adjourned. The facility, those in favor, please let it be known by sign of I, opposing's nay. The Facilities and Properties Committee is thus adjourned. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Now turn to Dr. Williams and the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to call the Finance Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Arlanda Williams.
Present.
Mr. Myron Lawson. Mr. Sam Gilliam. Mrs. Kristi Reeves. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Dr. Leon Tarver II. Attorney Edwin Shorty here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Ms. Reeves, second by Mr. Lawson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Any public comments? Seeing none, item five, action items. Item A, request approval to reinstate the $5 cheer dance fee at SUNO. Mr. Ammons, would you like, Dr. Ammons, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Finance Committee, members of the Board, President Shields. With the reinstatement of athletics at Southern University at New Orleans, the students held a referendum to gain support for the return of the cheer and dance team. This request, the $5 fee is in support of the dancing cheer team. This fee is a $5 fee per semester that the students would pay to support the travel, uniforms and training for the dance cheer team.
I'll entertain a motion to accept. Yes. Moved by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Gilliam. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B, request approval of fiscal fiscal year 2023-2024 budget request and addenda for the Southern University Board and System, the Board and System Administration, the Southern University Baton Rouge Campus, Law Center, New Orleans, Shreveport and the Ag Center. I'll entertain a motion. Moved by, who's that? Mr. Tarver, Dr. Tarver, second by Mr. Gillum. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six, informational item, your interim financial reports are in your packet. There's no other business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Information item, looking to at the interim financial report. Just an observation, it appears rather that SUNO is somewhat down just a little bit in self-generated funds. Dr. Ammons, if I'm, am I correct in my observation?
We are still working with students to to pay. We're gonna, we will be okay. All right, we have a contingency. We are very conservative in the way that we budget. The budget is a plan. We will not overspend the budget. And the other thing that we do is that we allocate one half of the budget this semester and the other half next semesters, we watch the enrollment and the collection of revenue.
And of course, this is, that's what, but here she's self-generated. Okay, and the other one, Madam Chair, just an observation to, a commendation, I guess, would be in order for Susler. They appear to have somewhat of an increase in their self-generated fund. And this is, of course, driven by their enrollment. I believe they made the observation, it will be in the report, but but I just throw it out right here. I think it's the third highest enrollment that we've had on the campus. Is that right?
Thank you, Miss Chairman. That is correct. Our, we've been very blessed this fall 2022 enrollment season. Our enrollment as of right now is 3105 paid students. That represents the the highest enrollment at Southern University in Shreveport over the last six years. And in the historical context, is the third highest enrollment in the history of the university. And I give all the, I give all the accolades to the faculty, staff, students who really rallied behind that old-fashioned concept, Madam Chair, Lady Emeritus, that we often talk about, get out there into the schools and do what you need to do. And that's paying dividends for us. In addition, of course, and it's in your report, our dual enrollment is up by 10%. We are actually leading the Southern University system in the number of duly enrolled students here at Susler. And again, that's a testament to our faculty, staff and students. Our continuing enrollment students is up 27%. New students is up 10% and transfer in enrollment is up 15%. What a blessing for Southern University of Shreveport and I want to thank this board for all of your support. Thank you, Miss Chairman.
Well, tell our people that it keeps them what they're doing. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please stand in the chair.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Chair, we'll now call to order the Governance Committee. Roll call, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Myron Lawson.
Present.
Dr. Leon Tarver II. Dr. Leroy Davis. Ms. Nadia Foster. Ms. Kristi Reeves. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item three, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion? Moved by Reeves, probably second by Dr. Tarver. Discussion, and now in favor, I. Close motion carries. Item number four, are there any public comments relevant to the agenda as adopted? I have one card in my hand for Mr. Willie Zanders on the with the SUNO Foundation attorney for them. And it's relevant to agenda item five A, five B, Mr. Zanders.
Good morning, Honorable Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our comments concern the actual policy itself with regards to achieving uniformity in contracting policies. And we would like to know whether or not this new policy affects the SUNO Foundation agreement or is that a separate item altogether? And that will determine whether or not our comments are relevant. The way it reads, it's not clear whether or not the SUNO agreement and other memorandum of understanding will fall under this uniform policy that's been discussed or if that's a separate item altogether. Or whether or not the SUNO agreement is up for discussion today at all, not clear based on the reading of this.
I'm gonna yield to the Chair to address your concerns there.
Counselor, if you could address this, I don't think this has anything to do with the foundations.
I think, thank you, sir. I wanted to be clear. And I'll only add that the good news today is that the SUNO Foundation has sold out banquet. Over 500 tickets sold, over $100,000. We appreciate the support of the Board. And hopefully we can keep on doing good business. And we want to be on that positive note to help the university every way we can. And the fact that it's not on the agenda says a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanders, and kudos to the SUNO Foundation. Dr. Tarver?
Yes, I'd like to ask our attorney to respond to this B request. Does the policy, the change in policy, remove the decision-making from the Board of Supervisors to the chances of a campus in determining the adoption of an affiliated organization to that campus?
Are you referring to when an organization can be affiliated that's gonna stay with the Board?
Can can we go ahead and get into that body? If you wouldn't mind, Dr. Tarver, because we're still on public comments because it's a good question to ask. On that, we'll go to action item five and we'll go five A request. We'll do this in global if it's wishes of the committee, but we'll certainly entertain any questions in global about any of the three items. I'm hoping to separate them if you deem it necessary. Okay, let me read them all first. Item A, request approval for agreements and contracts policy that Southern University System. This policy is to enable the Southern University System to achieve uniformity in its contracting policies and to assist with more effective and efficient management of the system's agreements. This policy also to ensure compliance with Louisiana Procurement Code and Louisiana Code of Governmental Ethics. B, request approval for affiliated nonprofits organizations dispersment policy. Item C, request for approval of revised. Item C, request for approval of revised uniform personnel action policy that Southern University System. Entertainer motion, then we'll entertain questions. Is there a motion? Move for discussion. They're second to the motion. Second by Board Member Reeves and motion made by Board Member Davis. Discussion, Dr. Tarver.
Yeah, I'm back to eight B, I'm sorry. So the question I have to our attorney is to explain this policy change, and it was whether or not the action of B would remove the responsibility from the Board of Supervisors to give final approval to the affiliation, or whether that's being given now to the Chancellor of each campus.
No, the affiliation of a of a nonprofit organization still rests with the Board of Supervisors. This, this, this policy is, is directing more in line with, with payment that would be made from, from those foundations or the dispersments from this foundation.
But, but not in the determination of the adopting of the relationship?
No, sir.
Okay.
This, this policy dictates, once that organization is affiliated, what would happen?
I, I would like in the future, and I think we used to get this, and maybe it is italicized, but I, I've not seen it. The changes recommended, is that highlighted in these documents?
Yeah. Well, this this policy here is a new policy. From the last board meeting, the Board of Supervisors directed us to develop a policy in compliance with revised statute seventeen thirty-three ninety, which deals with the dispersment of funds and so from the nonprofit foundations. So that's what this policy is dealing with, because we didn't have one at that time.
And I read in the document, it also infers to organizations under the control of the system, if I recall. And as I appreciated, the nonprofits are totally autonomous entity, right?
To, to an extent, they are autonomous by virtue of their own incorporation. But in order for them to affiliate, they then have to follow a set of guidelines and standards such that when auditing and other things come around, they need to know exactly how they're playing with us for purposes.
And I think what Dr. Tarver is asking, which was one of my concerns too. The recommendations here are not in conflict with the discussion we had. Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Tarver, will you finish?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. Yeah, that was part of my question also. Give me, I'd like to hear some of the specifics of it. I know this is a new program. Since our last board meeting. Okay, and even with item number one, I, I guess I will let the President address that one. Item A, but also item B, dealing with our nonprofits. What is the dispersment agreement that y'all have come up with since the last meeting? That's what I'm, because it wasn't in there. Could you explain that, please? The dispersment agreement we're about to vote on?
Sure.
How is the dispersment for the nonprofits? What is it going to be moving forward?
You're asking Attorney Sam's of Deque.
Well, the effective date would be after the meeting. So if you approve it today, the effective date of the dispersment policy would, would be today.
And what are specifics on it? How is this dispersment going to be achieved? Is it going to be bi-monthly, weekly? What, what is the specifics of it? That's what I'm asking.
So they will complete the forms that the foundation would have. They would send for the dispersment payments, which is what's been occurring. But if it is under a thousand dollars, it would be approved by the Chancellors, which from my appreciation is what's been occurring. But if it's over a thousand dollars, it would be, have to be approved by the President with reporting to the Board on a, I think, a biannually basis.
So whenever a department wants to request money, it's under a thousand, it goes to the Chancellor, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if it's over a thousand, and this is for all of the nonprofits under the university? Would the foundations include, be included in that also at our other campuses?
This is just reimbursements for university personnel?
Yeah, you said foundation, that's what I was.
Yeah, that's why.
From the, from the foundation funds. So if a university personnel is asking for reimbursement from the foundation for expenses that.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, I know last meeting with, there were some concerns about the way dispersals are being. What was our policy before, before we are enacting this? What was our policy?
My understanding is that we did not have a formal policy before enact, before, at present, we didn't have a formal policy. But the practice was, from my understanding, that it was being approved by I believe the President, the President.
Every, every one of them hit my desk, whether it was ten dollars or ten thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars.
Is this going to affect us moving forward with perhaps the, the foundation? Is it our foundation that's included or not the foundation? This is strictly university?
These are, these are university individuals or departments seeking reimbursement from their accounts at the foundation.
And is there, what is the process for the timeline for it? So if somebody submits it today, is it five days and it's going to be monthly, bi-monthly? What is the dispersment going to be once it's been signed by you, or is it done immediately?
It, it goes to the foundation. They they review it, make sure the appropriate signatures are there, and then they send them out.
Okay, I guess part of my concern was, speaking with folks, is that they're having to wait sometimes, and they let me finish, having to wait in excess of more than two weeks, in some cases, a month. Could this be incorporated to included being on a weekly basis?
Well, there might be a whole lot of reasons for that. So they submit it to their college or department chair. It may take days, week, whatever, once it leaves their hands to make the request. Then it, then it goes through our finance department. That may take a couple of days, and then it comes to my desk. So it, it's not the foundation's delay. There are a lot of reasons why something might take two weeks or a month for it to hit. And then if there's some question about it, it might be sent back down the chain, and that happens sometimes. So.
And the reason I'm saying is, I, I know a lot of individuals use their own money and for different projects that they have. They have to submit it. In some cases, it's taking a little longer. So I'm saying if it can be written into the governance.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree to that because it, it's not one entity that's caught, that might cause it to be slowed down. Sometimes something hits my desk and I say, oh, wait a minute. I need further explanation for what's going on. If you write into the policy that things have to be paid within a week or two weeks, that doesn't necessarily address what might be the issues in dispersing the money.
Well, I'm speaking in terms of reimbursement. Reimbursement to individuals that have, in many cases, use their own fund.
Why, why don't we, if it's a will?
I just have.
Fund deal. Well, remember that we revisit this, because we need to look at our entire process, the reimbursables, and whatever committee uses high on it too, and that we have a comprehensive policy. I feel what he's saying. Because it sounds good, but people are not being reimbursed. And as a timely manners, I think we would want them to. And I would like to get it streamlined if possible. It sounds like we were in a direction because you're raising the threshold, right?
We're raising the threshold, so that's one last.
Mr. Chairman, then, Board Member Rutledge, happy you finished.
I'm wondering if we're mixing issues that are, that are separate. I, I think what I hear in Mr. Fondale's comments is, is something that we need to discuss directly with our foundation on how they do dispersments. This policy is specifically to deal with the President not having to approve all of the individual dispersment requests. And it has nothing to do with the timeliness of the dispersments. Not to discount what Mr. Fondale is saying, but I don't think this policy has anything to do with the timeliness. It's just to make sure that he had, he doesn't have to approve every last request from an employee seeking reimbursement from the foundation.
My concern was, is that this has come since our last meeting. And there are no specifics on it. You know, and all I'm saying is just for us to be able to look at the specifics of it. And I know there are more than me in here who may have opinions on this. You know, but just trying to gather more information on it, and I believe that's what we should do.
Board Member Rutledge.
Let me press this by saying I share. Let me press this by saying. That I share your concerns about the timely reimbursement to employees. But we've got to be, there's one thing we need to be mindful of. Technically, this board does not have the authority to dictate to the foundation a timeline for reimbursement. So we need to be careful with that. But we do have the authority to dictate to our own internal finance office to make certain that they review their policies and that they are more efficient in the reimbursement of employees, because all of the the universe of, the, the universe of reimbursements, all of them don't come from the foundation. I would suspect the minority come from the foundation, but the overwhelming majority come from the university proper. So I just wanted to put that out there. So let's be careful about extending ourselves where we really don't have the authority to do that. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, if you want to follow. Then we have Board Member Gillian.
Asking these questions, just to find out the specifics of it. All of this has come about since our last board meeting, okay? And one of the challenges that is out there for those of you that are here is the timely dispersment. And through the foundation or through other foundations, that has been some of the concern of folks around here. And that's why I'm making it here on the record, so that we can address it as a group. So that the others here can understand. It's something that we can look into. I'm not saying I don't have a solution for it right now. But it is something I believe that should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member. Board Member Gillian.
Thank you, Mr. My, Mr. Lawson. As I read this too, and as I initially looked at the packet, I, I, I circled that item. Because I said to myself, the devil appears to be in the detail on this. The idea is that and after listening to Dr. Tarver's statement of clarification and request for further clarification, and from listening to the public comment, I'm even more convinced of that fact. And as I pulled the packet, and there is a plethora of information in this packet of those who care to read it on this specific issue. And it appears as if it were designed to deal with the internal financial dispersment process. So what, what's, what's throwing me off is the first line. Why does it even have affiliated nonprofit organization dispersment lettering in there? I, I think I go back to Chairman. I think this needs to be looked at a little, a little further.
It's, 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 it's a bit nebulous, I would say that. And I'm glad we're on a record. Clarifying this is not going to change how the foundations are doing their current dispersments. But Mr. Dequeer affirmed that. And so did Mr. Sam's. Go ahead.
Right. The, as the question that you raised, Mr. Gillum, where we're talking about affiliated seventeen thirty-three ninety is the referenced statute, and it only covers those nonprofits which support our education. So in this policy that we're developing, that we're asking to approve is only in relation to those that we have aligned with by affiliation. So any other nonprofit that exists out there that may say that they're doing something philanthropic for our university, if they've never affiliated with us, this has nothing to do with them. This is only going to control or govern those that we have some relationship with through affiliation. And the referenced paragraph in, in the policy where it says thirty-three ninety F, what that is, is state law says that if you reimburse somebody in excess of a thousand dollars, you have to have this policy that dictates who signs off on it and where it goes from there. So kind of going back to what Chairman Shorty was suggesting is that this one policy simply brings into line the direction that thirty-three ninety F has, which says you need to have a policy if you're going to pay somebody through a reimbursement that is an employee of your university using foundation funds. That, that is an affiliated foundation. And this simply memorializes that, that particular relationship.
And I think it streamlines it. That's the good part. We're not having every reimbursable come across the President's desk. And I think just move along a, a time coming, as far as I'm concerned. Any other questions? Unreadiness for the call of the question? Okay, all in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries. Six, any other business needs to come before the Governance Committee? Okay, that includes Governance Committee. And the seven adjournments? Got a motion? Thank you. No second necessary.
Dr. Tarver.
Now call the Personnel Affairs Committee to order. Roll call, Mr. President.
Certainly. Dr. Leon Tarver II.
Here.
Ms. Christie Reeves. Mr. Raymond Fondale. Attorney Jody Amadi. Reverend Samuel Tolbert. Dr. Arlanda Williams. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to action to item three, adoption of the agenda. And a motion to adopt the agenda. If there are any changes or motions for that? And a motion to adopt it? It's been moved by Fondale, it's been sectioned by Mr. Amadi. That we adopt this agenda? Any changes? I have a question. Pardon? Is that changed in, it has already been off?
No, it's still on.
Oh, then we, yes. So let me bring this to the board's attention. There's only one item affected by a particular change, and it's item C eight. So we would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with the exception of item C eight. Been properly moved in second. Those in favor, let it know in sign of I. Those opposed? And I have it. Thank you. Item four, public comments. Are any public comments on any agenda item at this time? Hearing? Hearing none. We move to item five. Action items. A, request approval of personal actions for Southern University System. A, B, request approval of personal actions for SUNO. C, request approval of personal actions for S U B R. D, personal actions for S U S L A. And E, request personal actions for Southern University Agriculture Center. And finally, F, request personal actions for S U L C. And I have a motion for that adoption?
I'd like to make a motion to go in global.
Okay, then move in second. There'll be a few actions items A through F. All of those in favor, let it know in sign of I.
I.
Those opposed? So have it. Thank you very much. And now we are to action item five G, request approval for salary adjustment for unclassified staff at Southern University of New Orleans. Dr. Ammons?
Thank you, Dr. Tarver and members of the Personnel Committee. This is a request to award a three percent increase to unclassified staff at the university. It comes after faculty received a seven and a half percent increase last year. They received an eleven percent increase this year. The classified staff will receive and I would say an automatic increase because they are covered by state policy. This three percent increase will allow us to really show some appreciation to the unclassified staff. It will allow us to begin addressing salaries because we are losing staff, we're losing leadership at the institution. And the unclassified staff has been extremely important to the recent successes of the institution. And so with this proposal, employees in all classifications would receive an increase. The other thing that I would like to say too is that the increases would come from three sources. Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the general fund. Twenty-three thousand from auxiliaries. And a hundred and one from contracts and grants. So this, a little over three hundred thousand would be spread across three different funds at the university. And I think it would go a long way in sustaining the morale of the unclassified staff. Sustaining the morale of the unclassified staff.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Any questions?
This. Yeah, I have a question. Yeah.
Dr. How many people does this affect?
Uh, this is, uh, going to affect, um, about, uh, hundred and twenty people.
Right, thank you. Dr. Williams.
I would like to make the motion, uh, because as he spoke earlier, to get them as close as he possibly could to the S R E B average. It's going to help, especially in the region that SUNO is in, because there's so many competitions for other, um, institutions. So. I would hope that we can support moving this forward.
We have a motion by Dr. Williams, seconded by Amadi. All those in favor, they don't sign of aye? Those opposed? So have it. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Fondal.
Appreciative that we've, uh, we've passed this item on the agenda. But I would also ask that we would look, uh, um, at unclassified workers. Here on our S U B R campus. And, uh, Dr. Tarver, you can probably speak to. You know, how the process is for that moving forward as far as raising the unclassified workers up at the lowest level.
Yeah, that would really fall under the purview of the Chancellor and the President. And, and I'm sure they will be able to visit. Mr. President, you care to?
Would you care to address that?
Uh, so, uh. Unclassified, right. So we, we are reviewing that now. Uh, th- there's two sides to that. What we'd like to do and what we can afford to do. So we need to balance both of those things, but we are looking into that.
Thank you. He had no other question. Was there any other business before the personnel committee? Being none, we had a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Fondal, seconded by Mr. Amadi. And so we'll join.
Thank you, Dr. Tarver. The meeting of the full board. Of supervisors called to order. Roll call, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Present.
Dr. Rainey Whitfield. Attorney Jody Amadi. Mr. John Bartholomew.
Right.
Dr. Leroy Davis. Mr. Raymond Fondal Jr. Ms. Nadia Foster. Mr. Sam Gilliam. Mr. Richard T. Hilliard. Mr. Myron Lawson. Ms. Christie Reeves. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Ms. Ann A. Smith. Dr. Leon Tarver the second. Reverend Samuel Tol, Tolbert. Dr. Orlando Williams.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of the agenda, uh, with one modification. I would like to move the SUNO Chancellor's report. Up to, um. Right before we begin our action items, given that the SUNO Chancellor has a presentation to make in New Orleans. Um, that's, that's very significant presentation. Can I get a motion? Move by Mr. Rutledge. Can I get a second? Second by Ms. Reeves. All in favor, say aye. The agenda is adopted. Are there any public comments? Any public comments, Jermaine, to? This agenda? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Uh, I'm Dr. Albert Samuels. I am Chair of Department of Political Science. And I'm also a member of the Smith Brown, uh, fiftieth anniversary comm- commemorative committee. And, uh, I'd like to speak to, uh, actually, I have a five D. Uh, which requests, uh, removal of the ban. Uh, for those who participated in the student protests. Of nineteen seventy-two. As we, as now, we are approaching the fiftieth anniversary. Of the murders of Denver Smith and Leonard Brown. And they are the reason that the union bears that name. Of course, some of the students who participated. In that were kicked out of school. And, uh, suspended and not allowed to return. And. Given that history and the fact that a lot, a lot of students in that time period. Suffered consequences because they took stands. That challenged the establishment and challenged, uh, the conditions on many of our campuses. Uh, I think it is incumbent upon this, this board, even though it's been fifty years. There's still people, uh, alive. Uh, and some, some of them are here today. Uh, who were affected by those events and, and have an opportunity to right a historical wrong. And so I encourage this board to, uh, to, to, you know, to adopt this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sam. Any other public comments?
Uh, did this item on the? Why, why is it under the, the Law, Law Center? Item on the fiftieth anniversary.
Let's, let's get to it when we, when we get there a little bit. I'll figure that out for you.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you so much for allowing us a moment to honor the efforts of students who graced and changed this campus fifty years ago. My name is John Collins and I am the project manager for the Louis A. Berry Institute for Civil Rights and Justice at S U L C. Today, we bring greetings on behalf of the institute and our partners as we commemorate the lives of Leonard Douglas Brown Gilbert. And Denver Allen Smith, who were both only twenty years old when they tragically lost their lives. On November sixteenth, nineteen seventy-two, on this campus of Southern University. Every decade, we've memorialized Smith and Brown, many times without honoring the protest and will of the students. Who fought to change this campus for the better. In the years since, Smith Brown Memorial Union has been renamed in their honor and our memorial marker has, uh, bearing their names has been installed on campus. However, this board today has an opportunity to further honor their legacies by providing justice to the students. Who at great risk dare to demand equality. Several students and faculty members were banned in the wake of the nineteen seventy-two protests. And deaths of Denver Smith and Leonard Brown. For fifty years, these students who believed in fighting for equity in education. Have stayed away from this campus under the belief. That they remain unwelcome from campus because of the decisions. Of administrators before our time. Today's board has long championed equity for the Southern University system and has enhanced the status of the entire system through those efforts. Today's board has empowered its students to be more socially and politically vocal, active and aware. The students and faculty that were punished in the aftermath were merely advocating for remarkably similar objectives to this board today. And so we ask that this board takes this opportunity to honor the fiftieth commemoration of the deaths of two young university students by rescinding the ban. On the students and faculty who sacrificed for equality. So before I defer to the So- Southern University alumni, Federation Chaplain Jonathan Hill and Executive Director Dr. Kendrick Stewart. And S U B R student and president of his chapter of the N double A C P, Ashante Gleason, to allow them to make brief remarks. I would like to read a letter from the founder and chairman of the Denver Smith Foundation. His own nephew, Denver Terrence. And I know I'm over time, I'm so sorry, but. I want to read this letter. Thank you. So on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Denver Smith sent this letter. He said, I am Denver, I'm sorry, Denver Smith's nephew, Denver Terrence. I am Denver Terrence, Southern University class of two thousand and one. Nephew of Denver Smith and founder of the Denver Smith Foundation. I fully support the petition to remove the ban placed on the student leaders in nineteen seventy-two. As you all are aware. The organizing of these students led to law enforcement shooting and killing Denver Smith and Leonard Brown. I recently was made aware that these student leaders were not only arrested and expelled, but also permanently banned from Southern University. They should be celebrated. They are examples of what you do when you identify injustice and to seek out a better education. Historically, education is a vehicle for improving our lives and the plight of black people. Fortunately. For those student leaders, they were able to continue their education at other institutions. Denver Smith and Leonard Brown were not allowed to complete theirs. You all have the rare opportunity of correcting a historic wrong. I believe that our collective courage and ethics has evolved and the right thing will be done. Which is to instantly remove the ban. Sincerely, Denver Terrence, President of the Board of the Denver Smith Foundation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ashante, um, Ashante Gleason, uh, President of the S U B R, N double A C P Chapter.
Hello, um, I'll introduce myself again. I'm Ashante Kate Gleason, a junior major in history from New Orleans, Louisiana. And I serve as the President of the Southern University Chapter of N double A C P. I'm going to also stand here today as a voice for the students of Southern University Baton Rouge. Um, those students who have a deep desire to be a part of the change that better this university in any way, shape or form. And equally have a deep desire to pay reverence and. Honor to those who sacrificed much of everything in the nineteen seventy-two protests that led to the deaths of Denver Smith and Leonard Brown. Um, when. We are taught this history, I know myself, I felt more empowered as a student of this institution. Um, and I felt more able, able to be a part of the change and sit at the table with you all. Um, it encourages us to stray away from complaining about things that happened to us on campus. And go further towards being a part of the change through the path that they paid for us in those protests. So, um, but hearing of the ban that. Was placed on the students that were part of the protest only discourages us from wanting to walk towards that change. Um, so we decided to create a petition that rece- received the support of nearly twenty. Active student organizations who also has a part, a, a nearly a part of. Nearly one hundred students in each organization to support us with this. Um, and with this, we're reminded that together we can, but with your support of removing this ban from those students, we're encouraged and reassured from you all. That together is possible for us. So, um, we're asking that the ban is explicitly removed, whether reprinted. Um, in front of us and torn in front of us as well, so that we can see that there's opportunities for students to advocate for their institution and feel safe here. Um, in order for us to connect with history with those who are banned, to come back and tell the stories that we need to know. More about the Smith Brown case, instead of us just going to the union and hearing of the stories that are told there. But having deeper experiences with them to connect more with the institution and able to walk in power here as students of Southern University. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, good morning. Dr. Kendrick Stewart, Southern University Alumni Association Federation, uh, Executive Director. Uh, we'll be very short. We're in total support. Uh, it's legacy, it's time, and we just need to look at other avenues. I'll turn it over to him.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jonathan Hill, I serve as a national chaplain for the Southern University Alumni Federation. And on behalf of our President, President Carlton Jones, we too stand in support of removing the ban of the students who were banned in nineteen seventy-two as a result of the protests. That took place on this campus. And just a moment, one of our alums is going to read some of the names. And while he reads some of the names, we want the band to make sure it is inclusive of those individuals whose names we may not even be aware of at this time. But we may find out at a later date. And so thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Good morning. My name is Stanley White. I am a Southern University alumni member. I. Was here from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy-three. Graduated in electrical engineering. I was on campus to date this incident, this accident or this murder occurred, but I was not on the scene at the time. I have been chosen to. Read the names that we know of, and I've given copies to be passed around to the Board of Supervisors. The names that we know of today, I will read those names off. I will admit that we're not sure that we have an exhaustive list of all of the students who were banned. And some of the, and the professors, but we'll give you what we have today for this claimer. And then we will work to update, uh. The record as far as we can find. This information is not easy to find. So. I am also the Vice President of the Arizona Chapter. So I represent the Arizona Chapter as an alumni. And I am the Director of Communications of the Sons and Daughters Special Projects Team Fund. Which, uh, supports the university, the university students, the recruitment, retention, mentoring and graduation. With regards to the students. We had a group named Students United. That's being passed around. And. There were four leaders that we know of were arrested at approximately four AM in the morning. Uh, prior, well, the morning of. November sixteen, nineteen seventy-two. Those are the four names at the top. I will come back to them. Chester Stevens was a classmate of mine. He was part of the organization. He also has inside information that has not appeared in many of the articles that have been printed. With by the media, et cetera, et cetera. He is out of state at this time, but I have spoken with him. He will be back in Baton Rouge next week and he is willing, uh, to address this body. He's willing to be interviewed. And, uh, I've made arrange, will make arrangements for him to be interviewed by representatives of the Law Center who are working on these projects. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Adia Lampkin is one of the representatives. So I will make arrangements for him to have a, uh, interview and he wants to do his interview face to face. The names that I have so far are eight names and I will go through them in sequence. The first four. Ricky Hill. And Fred Page, Prejon were cited in articles as leaders of the organization. I was just informed that Fred Prejon is deceased as of January of twenty twenty-two. I did not notice. Uh. Charlene Cheetum Hartnett, also known as Sakura, or Sakura. Along with her husband, Thomas Edward Hartnett, senior. Those, they were arrested along with Ricky Hill and Fred Prejon. Tom, uh, Chester Stevens, as I mentioned, was one of my classmates. He was not allowed to, uh, he was banned from the campus. And he is willing to address this body as well be interviewed by the Law Center representatives. Ronald Haynes was an architectural student from New Orleans. He was also a Vietnam veteran. Sababu was an electrical engineering student. I do not know his given name. But he was known as Sababu and he was from Gina, Louisiana, not New Roads. And last but not least, Wayne Williams. Who is also on the video. That's in the Student Union Center as one of the leaders. Although the agenda did not call for it for the professors, am I allowed to read the professors' names that I have?
Please.
Okay, the professors' names that I have on the list that I know of. Dr. James Shaper was the Dean and Professor of Architecture. After being expelled or fired or terminated, he went on to become the Dean of the University of Michigan Law School. Is very successful, highly recognized. So we lost the gem. Uh, George Baker, Electrical Engineering Professor. He did teach me. I took classes from George Baker. And he went on to Xavier, I believe, or Xavier, I believe. Dr. Joseph Johnson was. Professor and Chair of the Physics Department. He went on to another HBCU, uh, I believe. And Richard Johnson, Mechanical Engineering Technology Professor. Uh, I would like to, uh, ask anyone who is on this list, anyone who was affiliated. With that to, uh, rec, be, stand up to be recognized at this time. Ms. Miss, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, my, my question is that I thought you, uh, Mr. White, what you're doing. If we made a motion on top of this to include all names known and unknown. Would that be something that would be sufficient in addressing names that are going to come after the fact later discovered?
Absolutely. And if I'm allowed to do so, I would like to motion.
Okay.
That all names and names unknown that were affected by the ban. Be. Part of this ban, removal of the ban.
It hadn't come up yet, but it's going to come up when the item comes. So we'll, we'll add that to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions for anybody?
No, thank you.
Any more comments?
Add to the minutes of this meeting.
Is Professor Adia here?
One question. One question.
Dr. Davis?
Yes. I, I understand there was a, an FBI investigation and report. Have you, have you been able to ascertain that report?
Well,
and maybe, maybe that goes to the dean of law.
So I am an attorney. I've gone through hundreds of pages of documents. I did read the Attorney General's report. I didn't see anything about the FBI's report yet. Still trying to get my hands on it. So I haven't come across the FBI report yet, though. No, sorry.
Okay, I, I, I just, I was, I was a first year stu, first year faculty member here in seventy-two. And I was called in to the President's Office. I mean, I didn't know up or down. I didn't, I didn't even know where the bathrooms were in my building. They called me and to interview me. I didn't, I didn't know a thing about it. And only because I had been involved in student demonstration from the time I entered Arkansas Pine Bluff as a freshman, we started marching and closing the university down. Then went on to University of Illinois and a whole bunch of marches there, but, but I didn't know anything about this. But what I'm saying is that my son's father-in-law was an FBI agent on this case. Yeah, his, his last name is Jeter. He passed away about three years ago. But he, he, he said there was a report that was done. He even named a lot of the people that I knew in Baton Rouge, on the campus and in the city. He told me about it, but, but there is supposed to be a report out there about FBI, because he's an FBI agent.
Yes, sir. I don't.
And was a member of the, of, of this case.
I don't doubt it at all. I, I saw some references to FBI reports and, and commissions, but I didn't see anything.
I'm sorry.
That's no problem.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, I, I saw references to FBI reports and federal things, but I just, I didn't see anything within the, the systems archives of the atrocity.
Yeah, his, his name is Melvin Jeter, J E T E R.
I'll be sure to look into that.
Yeah. From Indiana, but he, he was an acting agent on this case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Any other public comments?
If we, you can entertain one more by Mr. Ed Pratt.
Good morning.
Morning.
The President and the Board and all my good friends and stuff that, from my time here at Southern University. My name is Edward Pratt. I'm a nineteen seventy-five graduate of Southern University. I was about forty-five yards, maybe less, from the two students that were killed when it hap, when that happened on this campus on November sixteenth. And I think the reason why I've been asked to come here is that over the period, over the period of forty years, I've written about thirty-five thousand words about that incident. And I've also brought forward stuff about what we should do and hopefully, hoping that those words would push somebody to tell the truth about what happened and to bring somebody to prosecute, to be prosecuted for what happened. And I do that, I've written so mu, so much about it that I've been asked to be on a number of shows and stuff to talk about it. I've been interviewed by newspapers and all that about that. But I say, I say to them, I was a student. I was eighteen years old. I didn't know much about what's going on on the college campus. This was an experiment to me, going to, going to college. But what I learned early on from those students and the, the spirit they had here. Like I said, I, I watched them. I remember being in a classroom, and there were students marching down the, the main street on campus. And one of my professors, my professor said, y'all want to look at that? And we looked at it and said, well, y'all want to go out and be part of that? I didn't know what I was being part of, but I went out there. But over a period of time in that semester, when I saw the students go out there and stop a football game. A lot of y'all don't remember that, but they stopped a football game. They went and sat, those protesters sat in the end zone and stopped a football game here. Well, that's when I knew they were for real. They used to have meetings in the men's gym, whatever, all the students and stuff come out there and you learn what was going on. That was a different type of vibe that we got. On the day of the shooting, I was in the union along with some other students and two of them graduated with me from McKinley High, and we were just sitting there. Darryl Castle and Carolyn Bell. And somebody mentioned a guy by the name of Sababu. We were sitting in there and the music, that was music from one of Michael Jackson's brother Daddy's home was playing on the jukebox. I know it was playing. And Sababu came in there and he had a helmet on. And he had like a military helmet. He walked in and said, I want y'all to come to the back of the campus. We need y'all back here. Fine, he, he ripped out the, by the fact, he got up and he ripped out the cord from the jukebox and stood on a table and said that. We got up and left. We went, we went back over here. The Sheriff's Department and all the law enforcement on one side, the students on the other side. And we're standing there just not knowing what's going on. There were students that were in the administration building over there. And I think one of your, one of your owners in that administration, Mr. Clinton, when you're in that building, was in that building at that time. And so as this was going on, we were like, okay, whatever these students, our students, our friends wanted, we want to be part of that. So all of a sudden, we heard bullets ring out. And what had happened was a sheriff's deputy or state policeman threw a tear gas canister toward where the students were. The students picked the tag, the tear gas ba, canister, threw it back. And then all hell broke loose. And they were, tear gas canisters were going everywhere. And when these, there was a scream, and I remember this, to this day, there was a young lady that screamed because when they backed away, there were two students on the ground. And our thought was that they got trampled from students that were running, but they hadn't. They'd been killed. That was that day, and that meant so much to me. It changed my whole life about, do I want to go to college? Do I want to finish this thing? Because as I said, college was an experiment. Because I came from, when I came here to, to Southern, I mean, I caught the bus to go, to come up here. I hitched a ride. Sometimes I couldn't even pay the transfer. When I got off the bus to go home, I had to walk the rest of the way. But I believed in Southern, and when those students were killed, I believed in it. And I've been writing stories about that for years. It means so much to me. It's my heart. This university is my heart. So much so that my wife graduating here, my son graduating here, my daughter has two degrees from here. And we believe in this, and we believe you, the group here that's representing the, the students that were banned from this university, that is an atrocity, that they were banned from here only for being a hero and to stand up and ta, and taking a stand that a lot of people wouldn't, wouldn't have. And I might be going past my three minutes, but please hold on for a second, because this stuff means so much to, to be here. I thought about transferring from Southern University when that happened. But me, my classmates, Darryl Castle and Carolyn Bell, who we ran, they ran us off the campus, by the way. That's another story. But anyway, we believe so much that we owe to the two students that were killed. We owe so much to those stu, to those students who were leaders here that we said we're coming back. And we coming back with heart. And we coming back to do whatever we could, we can to make Southern University better. I became a writer on the, the student newspaper. We raised hell on the digest of our things that were going on this campus, because we believe so much in what, what we, what we wanted to accomplish here. We want to, we want to do that for our, for our students. I break away for one second, one second from this. Y'all are talking about teachers and stuff on this campus and education. You know the true name of Southern University? Southern University A M and N. And the N was for the, the normal, which were the teachers here. So I just want to throw that out here if y'all had forgotten. Southern University A M and N, Agricultural, Mechanical, and Normal. So y'all can think about that now. But anyway, I just want to say I thank those students who put everything on the line for this university, and they were banned from this university. My heart breaks for them, for them. But I'm so happy that y'all are going to do something today to take that away and take away that, that whatever blight is on their histories and that you do that. And I want to say one other thing. I don't know what Sababu's real name is either, but I want to thank him for coming into the union that day and telling us to come back to the back of the campus to provide help. And hopefully they will try to provide shelter for those people, those students who were trying to do the right thing for Southern University. With that, I say thank you for letting me speak today.
May I say one quick thing in response to Dr. Davis's question? Uh, Dr. Davis, no, I'm, I'm an engineer. I'm not a lawyer or an attorney. This is not my profession, an alumni member. But the reports, the FBI reports and any of the other official reports are very hard to find and very hard to find the details. You won't find all of these names that I presented today in any of the articles, et cetera. You'll find two or three, but that's about it. And then the other thing is, is, is that it, there was a cover-up from the governor and the, the whoever's chief of police or whatever he was, the leadership of the police officers. Yes, though there were cover-ups. They told a bunch of lies about what happened and all kind of things, and they changed the story. So I just wanted to mention that. But as an alumnus member and with the team, Chancellor Pierre's team, I thank you Chancellor Pierre for bringing me into this. I will continue to work with them, the attorneys, as they do cold case and try to get to the bottom of this with regards to the FBI report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone who made a comment on this, this historic occasion. I don't think it's past any of us what this means and how important this moment is. Any other public comments? All right. Yes, sir.
I know we've already adopted the agenda, but I would like to ask for unanimous consent on item, Action Item Five D to include, in addition to what's already there, all names that are known and unknown.
With regards to Action Item Five.
I know you were going to make that motion. Wait until we get to, we haven't gotten there yet. You're going to make the motion to amend it.
Go ahead.
We were going to have Dr. Ammon's report, and I asked Dr. Ammon to get back to New Orleans because he had a presentation. His report is in your packet. The presentation, he's got to make it significant, and hopefully we will all hear very good things about that shortly. Let's turn to our action items. Seconded by Dr. Whitfield, moved by Mr. Rutledge. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Action Items Five A and B are approved. Action Item Five C moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by seconded by the pastor, my favorite pastor. All in favor? Ms. Reeves needs to recuse herself. Let the record reflect Ms. Reeves has recused herself from this vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Action Item Five C is approved. Action Item Five D, Mr. Fondale.
All right. In light of the information we have, we, we understand the buildings being named and the incident that occurred here back in seventy-two. For all the students that are, that, that participated, names known and unknown. I would ask that an amendment be added to this to include that as such, that all individuals involved be removed, the ban be removed for professors, anybody involved with this be removed. Ask for approval of that motion.
Seconded by Dr. Davis. All in.
Year, in two thousand and either eight or nine, there were degrees awarded to students who were expelled. Not only were the degrees awarded to them, but we had a reception for them as well. So they should be in your records, and you can add their names to this, to this list.
Dr. Tarver?
No, it's just about time that it was.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bartholomew? Unanimous. All in favor? Unanimous?
He wants to get a unanimous second from all.
Unanimous second. Let the record reflect a unanimous second. We need to vote on that. I think that's, that's carried. All right. Action Item Five D is approved. Action Item Five E.
I'm with approval of five E and F.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Mr. Fondale. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Action Item Five E and F are approved. We now turn to our resolutions.
Mr. Chair, the resolution, the resolutions for this morning include Reverend Dr. Jesse B. Billberry, Junior. Graduated from Southern University in nineteen fifty-one with a Bachelor of Arts degree, a Bachelor of Arts and Education degree, a Master's of Education from Louisiana State University in nineteen fifty-seven, and a Master's of Theology and Doctor of Theology from Christian Bible College in nineteen eighty-eight and nineteen ninety, respectively. He served as the first director of the freshman complex at Southern University and A and M College. He later organized and directed the university's first office of high school relations before becoming Director of Admissions. His tenure as an administrator at Southern University spanned fifteen years. Reverend Billberry retired from the university to assume the pastorate of Mount Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church in Scotlandville. Reverend Billberry was appointed to the Southern University Board of Supervisors by Governor Edwin W. Edwards and again by Governor Murphy James Mike Foster. Reverend Billberry pastored the Mount Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church for more than thirty-five years. He is the recipient of numerous awards and recognitions. Reverend Billberry was a member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, Phi Delta Kappa Honorary Society. He passed away on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Our second resolution is Robert Bob Jones received his Bachelor of Science degree from Southern University and A and M College in nineteen fifty-five. While attending Southern University, he became a member of Alpha Sigma Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. In nineteen seventy-four, when the Southern University Board of Supervisors was created, Mr. Jones was appointed to the Board by Governor Edwin Edwards, serving as Vice Chair of the Board and Chairman of the Athletic Committee. Mr. Jones was an active member of the Scotlandville Area Advisory Council along with other Scotlandville residents. He passed away on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. These are the two resolutions that I have before me to present. I believe Supervisor Bartholomew has something, a proclamation.
Mr. Bartholomew?
United States of America, State of Louisiana, John Bell Edward, Governor, official statement. In the name, in the name and by the authority of the State of Louisiana, I, John Bell Edward, together with the citizens of this great state, do hereby give special recognition to John Pierre in acknowledgement of your unyielding dedication and service to promote excellence in education and in receiving the Thurgood Marshall Fund Education, Education Award of the year twenty-two twenty, twenty twenty-two. Present this award to you, sir. Fun education, uh, education award of the year twenty-two twenty, twenty twenty-two, present this award to you, sir.
The whole room is one look over there. What's the guy doing over there?
Can I get a motion to approve the resolutions? So moved by Dr. Whitfield. Seconded by Hilliard, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted. We now turn to the president's report. Mr. President is eighteen eighty society sweater. Looking various.
Good morning. I'm gonna get right to it here. The, the. Southern University Shreveport. Search for the next chancellor is underway. I'd like to thank. Professor Fred Moss who graciously agreed to chair the committee. Uh, they've been hard at work, they've had listening sessions this week, they. Uh, will be drafting a prospectus and posting it. Uh, by October thirty-first, so we can start soliciting applications. So that's. Uh, proceeding at pace at this point, and I would thank every member of this search and search committee for the efforts they're putting in there. Since we last met, we had a Board of Regents budget hearing, I met with them. Presented their, the case to them for our. Uh, system budget that's moving forward, uh, set the priorities for capital outlay, et cetera. They also approved academic affairs policy. That establishes uniform guidelines for the placement of students in entry level, college level courses in mathematics and English. We were supportive of this effort and I think will improve our efforts to attract and retain students. I would mention to the board in a meeting with the presidents of the various systems. Uh, higher ed systems in the state that there's an important constitutional amendment on the agenda. Uh, and higher education fully supports it. Uh, Act one thirty of the twenty twenty-one legislative session allows the state to increase investment caps. From thirty-five to sixty-five percent for certain funds managed through the state treasurer. The amendment allows the treasurer to determine the best strategies for investment, meaning earning more money. Based on market conditions to generate revenue. There's a website, we have it on our website, if you like more information, I would, I would urge the supervisors and everyone. Present to vote in favor of that. Fortunately, it's amendment one, so it's right at the top of the list. Uh, I spent nearly two weeks in Washington DC or about eight days, about four days. Uh, for the HBCU week in the Congressional Black Caucus. I met with. Secretary of Agriculture, uh, Tom Vilsec with Chancellor McMeans. Senator Cassidy. Came across Representative Troy Carter, Congressman Steve Scalise, Scalise. And Undersecretary of Commerce for Minority Business Development, Don Cravens, one of our own. I came away from that week with the notion that, that we're at a point of inflection with federal support. For higher education and in particular historically black colleges and universities. There is a lot of resources sitting on the table there. On that front, I'm developing a plan for federal relations. Uh, function so that we can have more of a presence in DC and, and also here and pursuing. All of the myriad of federal grants that are available out there. We, we do pretty well. But millions of dollars are on the table for us. Also, more locally. I think for the first time, at least a few years, maybe the first time ever, the Rotary. We hosted the Rotary, the Baton Rouge area Rotary here on campus, a couple hundred people. So it was an opportunity to broaden our touch in Baton Rouge. In addition, the Baton Rouge area chamber hosted a meet and greet at a home here in Baton Rouge a couple of weeks ago. By my estimate, a couple of hundred people, that was for, to meet. Uh, the new president of Southern and his wife. It was a fairly impressive display of, of across the community interest in supporting. The success of Southern University. I was very moved by it and impressed by it, gave us an opportunity to. To meet some people to follow up with later, so that's some of what I've. Been up to over the last couple of weeks since this board last met. I, I will commit to this board to give a, a monthly write-up of. What I've been up to, uh, so that you a little more aware of what's going on. I sometimes get so caught up in, in the work that I forget to communicate that I'm gonna make a better effort to. At least in writing, update you. As to my activities and important issues that are coming across the campus. Uh, with that, I will end it, I certainly will entertain any questions, but would defer from my hardworking chancellors. Uh, who are doing fabulous things across the system.
Any questions for the president, members? All right, we will turn to our individual chancellors. Start up in North Louisiana, Dr. Penning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, President Chancellor Shields. Um, the pivotal item is all about enrollment, paid students, and that was shared earlier. Uh, but once again, the accolades goes to the teams who have worked so hard. Um, a thirteen percent increase in enrollment from twenty-seven forty-five to thirty-one oh five, representing the sixth. Uh, the third highest enrollment in the history of Sussla, the highest in the last six years. I give all the praise, all the accolades to my faculty, staff and students. And with that, uh, Ms. Chairman, you know, Sussla, your two-year college is the furthest from Baton Rouge, however. The interest by the faculty is so strong that we have members of the Faculty Senate. Who came down today to watch these proceedings and to support the work of this board. And I'd like to yield just a moment of my time to them, Ms. Daphne Tebow, if you're here. Ms. Daphne Tebow serves as the Vice President of the Faculty Senate, a professor in Rattick, and she has a couple of members, they just want to greet the board and if you would introduce your members.
Good morning.
Tebow, I am the Clinical Coordinator for Radiologic Technology and the Vice President of the Faculty Senate of Shreveport, Louisiana. Southern University at Shreveport, Louisiana, excuse me. I'd like to introduce who, uh, the two professors who are here with me today, Ms. Yvonne Williams. Uh, who is a didactic instructor for radiology as well as Ms. Sinthella Tobin, who is an instructor of nursing. At Southern University, uh, Louisiana, and we want to say that we are grateful to be here today. We're thankful for the work of Dr. Appening, who has served our university and has expanded our enrollment and for that we are grateful. Um, and we, um, know that there is a search committee moving, but I tell you, you search for things that you don't have. We are excited to have Dr. Appening serve as our interim chancellor. And we would love for him to serve as our permanent chancellor. I stand to say that. Uh, on the behalf of myself, Daphne Tebow, Vice President of the Faculty Senate.
Thank you ladies for coming down and thank you for all that you do and your words don't fall on deaf ears.
To close by saying that I do wear another hat, which is Systems Vice President right here in Baton Rouge. And I would commend our President Chancellor, Mr. Shields. Uh, as part of homecoming and the school spirit, something that has always been part of the SU tradition. That has gotten lost over the years and one has been the decoration of departments and offices. It's been part of our culture. Well, this has been in place this year and I'm proud to announce, and this is one, I was in Shreveport, so I can't place any credit for this. But under the leadership of Dr. Tony Monaghan, Mrs. Lucretia Jenkins, Reddy Gavini, Ms. Washington, Dr. Kush and Mr. Ruffin. And Ms. Williams Brown, if they're here, I'd like for them to stand up. The Office of Institutional Effectiveness, uh, Mr. President Shields, won first place in the decoration of homecoming celebrations. And Dr. Monaghan, this one, the rare times I yield the balance of my time because I'm gonna close, Dr. Monaghan, come up and just say a word on behalf of the office. You guys did a yeoman's job and share the theme for this board to know.
For the, um, for homecoming was reliving the archives. And in our office, we made a special effort to start with the beginning. Uh, starting with all of the presidents and showing all of the accomplishments. That they have contributed to the institution as well as yearbooks, starting with the very first yearbook. Uh, in nineteen twenty-eight and many of the buildings and the history. Of the institution, which ties in greatly with, uh, many of the things that have been spoken here, uh, today. But it was a very educational experience and we would love for any of you who are able to. Uh, to come to Blanks Hall, second floor and just walk through. We did more than decorate a door. We decorated our entire department and committed to others learning the history of Southern University. Thank you.
Presentation.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I raise a question to Chancellor or interim Chancellor?
No, that, that really wouldn't happen during the Chancellor reports.
Or there was something he missed in the report that we'd like to get on the record.
That really wouldn't be appropriate at this particular time.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, would I be able to do it before we adjourn? No. No? Okay, thank you.
But wait, Mr. Fondale, Mr. Fondale. Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Fondale, but we need to finish our Chancellor reports. Let me, let me get through my Chancellor reports.
But this is something that should be in the Chancellor report going forward.
The Chancellor decides what's in the Chancellor's report.
Okay.
Dr. McMeans.
We've been quite busy, uh, as it relates to the, uh. Ag Center and College of Ag, uh, last Friday, we, we had brunch and learn where we had our own, uh, Mr. Uh, Whitley, Daniel Whitley come in from Foreign Ag Service. As well as Dr. Toons, who is the over the National Institute of Food and Agriculture. So we had almost, uh, we had about two hundred students present, so. Uh, and we were at the Vaudre Center and people had to park across the street, so we were happy with the turnout of our students. We also had an event a couple of days ago called our inaugural campus market community. Of celebration where we not only gave away fresh, uh, produce. But we also had our family and consumer science students showcase their creativity. Uh, as it relates to fashion merchandise and nutrition and what have you, and this was led by our, our extension program, but also. A part of the academics, so, uh, we've been having a, a, a really good, uh, last seven days. Also, of course, last Saturday was Ag Day and we invited our colleagues over from all farm, we invited them over there and beat them up and. Sent them on their way to, the dean actually, the dean actually stayed with me, so he heard it until he left on Monday morning. Uh, so we were really excited about that. Um, um, the other thing I want to report on, and, and I know, uh, President, President Shields is really happy about this because. Uh, something I always knew, but he, he brought it home to me, but visiting with the Secretary of Agriculture. Uh, we were able to sit there in that meeting and give an invite to Niff, Nifa, who gives us about eighty percent of our funding federally. And she came to home, she came to the Ag, Ag Day and so, number of you met her, I've seen you on social media with pictures. And she has committed, um, she's already, and we have check in hand for one point nine million dollars. Uh, to expand our meat processing center. And the president can attest to this, I asked her for three point seven more million dollars that while we were sitting in DC, so. We wanted to take advantage and she did call me back two days ago, Mr. President, and, and she said, we will be talking in the next couple of weeks. And, and last but not least, uh, uh, I know some of you have already indicated, but I want you to please join us. And the Ag family for, uh, Vino on the Bluff at five o'clock at the Vaudre Center. Uh, we're looking for, is our inaugural, uh, that means that this is first, but it won't be the last. So we're looking forward to sampling some of the wines from, uh, two individuals that graduated that are alums of Southern University. Yeah, we, we, we will be tasting wine, uh, on the bluff. Uh, so, uh, and, and it'll be at the Vaudre Center. Uh, we're expecting a large crowd, uh, to, to be there, we sold out unfortunately. And that's a good thing, and so we're gonna have to probably expand the space, so I'm excited, uh, it's only rightfully that we moved to wine. Uh, we've started in medical marijuana and now we have, we have partnership with vodka. So it's appropriate, uh, that we move into viticulture and enology. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McMeans, any comments for Dr. McMeans?
Yeah, I have a comment. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Feed us, are you starting to smoke it? Now we're gonna drink it.
And Mr. Lawson.
It was great, the community outreach and communion on that, Dr. McMeans. And we're going out in the community and doing things at different conventions and things of that nature. Okay, that's great, because I want to make sure you have a conversation with Dr. Talbot at the National Baptist Convention. And we can display some of those products over there and, uh. The preaching may be a little short. We do have communion.
Dr. McMeans, before we, we, we move on, I do want to let you know after, uh, last night's reception, I, I went to another. Uh, event where I sat down with some friends and, and, uh, went through the sad. Process of watching the end of the Saints game. Um, but, but I sat next to some folks who were Jamaican and, and they were talking about goat and I said, and I was selling them on sun beef. And I said, you can get some, some great goat from our Ag Center, so, so if you get some random calls from some Jamaican folks, I sent them to you. Chancellor Pierre.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman Shorty. Um, first of all, I, I just, um. I can't say enough about, uh, how this board is, uh, just so supportive of. Southern University Law Center and, uh, and me, and I thank you, Mr. Bartholomew, that complete surprise. Uh, I, I want to thank Louis A. Berry Civil Rights and Justice Institute, we're working with a number of people. To bring this, uh, request for the campus ban. And, uh, again, this is an entity that you as a board. Allowed to exist and, and, and be created. Again, sometimes I think. I, I jokingly laugh, board votes for things, they don't necessarily understand all the time why they're voting for, but it comes to be, and this is. An organization that is working hand in hand with a very significant other organization. At the Northeastern University in Boston. With a professor named Margaret Burnham, who was actually a part of Freedom Summer nineteen sixty-four. With a professor named Margaret Burnham, who was actually a part of Freedom Summer nineteen sixty-four, who is, eh, empowering that particular, uh, Barry Institute to deal with restorative justice projects all over the South. And, uh, it was great to be able to help them help in this particular project. So I thank them. Uh, you should have received from Dr. Renee a, uh, invitation for Impact Louisiana, a launch reception on November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. That's Friday of the board being in the afternoon, and there are a lot of things going on, but the Impact Louisiana program is uh, another innovative program that again is really being pushed by one of, uh, our leaders in, in terms of our staff and faculty, and that is Professor, uh, Marina Beragava. Uh, and this project will provide, uh, on a pilot basis, legal services to small businesses in our pilot locations on New Orleans, Baton Rouge, La Pla, Shreveport, and Lake Charles. So again, this is an effort to spread the footprint of the Southern University system through the way that we can, and I, I call it spread the gospel of the Southern University system. And we would like for you to come to this reception. I know you've got a lot going on. We've got a sponsor with the New Orleans Business Alliance. It's right there, uh, at the Hyatt House, uh, they have the court, the, uh, location there, and Verizon. Verizon has been a big partner with us in this in endeavor. Uh, so this is, uh, extremely, uh, important that we get a good kickoff, and hopefully we can, uh, get your support with respect to that. Um, I, I also want to, um, commend my partner in crime, Southern University Ag Research and Extension Center, and we're gonna be bringing you something in November about a partnership, uh, collaboration with Smuckers. And many of you may not know it, but, but, uh, the place where coffee is manufactured, uh, with respect to Folges and the Smuckers is right in New Orleans, in New Orleans East. And, uh, it's probably the best kept secret in the state of Louisiana. Uh, if you haven't been to that location and see all the things that they do, uh, i- i- it's just amazing. Uh, and so we're gonna be trying to do something groundbreaking that, uh, together that we believe will be a, a transformative change agent opportunity for Southern University system. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Dr. McMeans and Dr. Toledo for following me on this crazy path. But it, you know, we, we just learned so much from this particular, particular thing. A- a- and then, uh, you know, finally, um, I want to say happy homecoming. Because, uh, I am known to say to our law students, homecoming is not for you, it's for the undergrads, because you got to study. But, uh, but, uh, but our, our students have been working really, really hard, and they're gonna have some, some great events going on, uh, with respect to homecoming. We don't, we don't, we don't, uh, they, they, they're doing Fall Fest this week, and, uh, Ms. Foss has done a good job of really, really a great job of fostering student engagement without going too far over, uh, the line, as we say, but, but she's done a really, really great job, and I want to thank her for her leadership, uh, in, in, in that capacity. And, and then finally, I just want to thank, President Shields, because, uh, he is, uh, really helping us as chancellors focus on very mission critical deals that we need to focus on. And, uh, I believe that if we continue to do that, we will have the kind of success, uh, that no one could imagine. Uh, because again, as a system, y- you just could not believe this. If I told you everywhere I go and people learn that I'm within the Southern University system, they want to find a way to get to the Southern University system. And all we have to do is work with those particular entities and find a way to make it work for us, and I think we can do that because we actually have a very powerful message, uh, to carry out to this country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any questions for Chancellor Pierre? Bring me some whole bean coffee once we figure out what's going on with Folges, or some Smuckers jam. Dr. Sahu.
Thank you, sir. Happy homecoming, uh, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board, uh, Mr. President. While the president and Chancellor McMeans were planning to visit, and the day they visited the Ag Secretary, the day prior, we got a need, we got a phone call that the Agriculture Under Secretary, Robert Barney, was in New Orleans and wanted to come to Baton Rouge, and instead of choosing LSU, chose Southern University for the meeting. And it's a, it was like thirty-six million dollar grant from the federal government, and our computer science department was chosen to do the computer modeling such that there'll be water conservation, energy conservation in the rice fields. We agreed to it in short order. I want to thank the President's Office, Aramak, and all of us got together at the Valdri Center, hosted a meeting of the Ag Under Secretary. Why am I saying this? Money is in Washington DC. While the president and the Chancellor McMeans were there, we hosted, and I think this will lead to better and more support for our students and our faculty. The president alluded to the, one of the priorities of the president is that to be stewards of place, good stewards of place on. We hosted a regular meeting of the Rotary, Baton Rouge Rotary Club. President Shields was the featured speaker and shared his vision for the university. Would like to note that the Managing Director of Alliant Inc., who were here to give us the one point three million dollars, serves as the president of that Rotary Club. This Rotary Club has more than five hundreds, you know, members, and is the fourth largest Rotary Club in the world. So I think there's a lot that we can expect from these kind of partnerships that the president emphasizes being good stewards of, stewards in place. On Wednesday, September twenty-first, Southern University and A and M College hosted a stop on the HBCU tour for the Tale film, co-written and co-produced by SUBR alumnus Keith Buikamp. The feature film depicts the true story of Mamie Tale, Mobley's fight for justice in the lynching of her son Emmett Tale. Tale, the movie, which is already receiving Oscar attention, is currently being played in select theaters and will be available in Baton Rouge and worldwide on October twenty-seventh. I urge you to please, and we will have our students also and our faculty to watch this. I think it is, it is something that every one of us should watch. I also would like to bring to your attention this, where I'm only highlighting the things that did not get into the Chancellor's report because it was done early. The Minority Business Development Agency announced one point seven mil- million dollar in grants to seven minority educational institution as part of an expanded program to support entrepreneurship for undergraduate students. Southern University and A and M College, Louisiana, received three hundred seven, seven hundred eleven thousand dollars of that to establish an entrepreneurship institute for developing an entrepreneurship curriculum focused on innovation, technology, and leadership education through academic courses, workshops, conferences, and electronic media. We do this because as more and more of our students become business owners, they will more and more employ people who will graduate from this university and other HBCUs. Education is an engine of opportunity, and the more business owners we can produce, the better we'll be in terms of our footprint, in terms of our prestige, in terms of our claim for, you know, prestige as a university. And our goal is to, the, all the things that we are doing, uh, to be the preeminent institution, um, with that provides entrepreneurship education and entrepreneurship support. We provide now with Zoom and all that, we provide outreach to entrepreneurs at all levels. Uh, and we have, you know, generous support we acknowledge from the federal government. That report concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sahu. Any questions or comments for Dr. Sahu? Is there any other business? Any other business? Seeing that, Mr. Rutledge moves adjourned. Second about Dr. Whitfield, all in favor say aye. We are adjourned.
Chairman, may I say something even though you were adjourned?
No, sir.